It's six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, November 12th. Call this meeting to order at six o'clock. We'll start off with delegation three point one. We have a guest, Robert Bollonge, Red River cleanup. Could just come forward and present. State your name and.
Robert Bollonge, councillor from St. Clement's and retired conservation officer of thirty-five years.
Okay, thank you. So you have a presentation for us today?
Yes, thank you very much, West St. Paul council, for having me here tonight to show you this presentation. Quarter century, quarter century, twenty-five years ago. As a conservation officer, I started this project on the Lower Red River watershed. And it was due to the fact of just being out there every day, checking anglers and walking the shorelines and doing regulatory work, coming across so much garbage that it was hard to even believe it was there. As somebody who grew up in the region from Selkirk and have countless hours of growing up on the shoreline fishing and enjoying the Red River. And now as a conservation officer out there doing the work, it was amazing to me what I was coming across and no real good solution or plan to make it better, to fix it. So what I did was I approached the RM of St. Clement's at the time, twenty-five years ago.
Sorry? No, sorry. I'll have to advance.
Okay, go ahead. I approached the RM of St. Clement's. It's the first place I went to talk to them about it and told them that I had an idea. And that idea was to try to create a environmental group of partners, the RMs, the province of Manitoba and the RM of St. Andrews, City of Selkirk. I visited them all and said, look, are you aware you have a problem out there of garbage? And all of them knew they had some form of garbage, but they didn't know how much garbage. At the very beginning, the program started. I started with two employees. They were social assistance employees. I needed work, so they got a job by working with the program. The program began by the RM of St. Clement's, City of Selkirk and the RM of St. Andrews coming on board with my pitch. And the program began, and it began by using my own truck at first because we didn't have a truck, my personal truck. And we went out and started trying to pick up garbage. As we all know, everybody knows this picture. It's the Red River watershed which stretches all the way over to Alberta. We're all familiar with this, but it's not really where the garbage comes from. A lot of the garbage comes from our own watershed which starts at Emerson and works its way all the way up to our municipal boundaries. But even at that, this is a source of the garbage. A lot of it comes from the Winnipeg shorelines up here. Right now, the locks are open at Lockport. Every fall, the locks open and they're open till spring. So once the spring thaw comes through, everything that's on the shorelines in Winnipeg area floats down and comes north through your RM, West St. Paul, and all the way to the north to us. A lot of the garbage too comes from these folks, fishermen that use the shoreline. They come with their lunch, they come with their A and W bags, their Skinner's bags, their minnow tubs, and they just leave them. They see the garbage there already back in twenty-five years ago and they thought, well, if the garbage is here already, I'll just leave it and no one's picking it up. So that was another big source of the garbage. Another big source of the garbage was not only the minnow tubs, not only the A and W bags and small refuse like that. Believe it or not, a lot of the garbage was household items. People would find a nook and cranny along the Red River. The end of Maine, north of Selkirk, is a really beautiful area that runs or comes right into Netley Creek. It was decommissioned years ago. They pulled out a bunch of cottages from there that were on a floodplain. St. Andrews did that. And by doing so, it just created all those open lots that people would just pull into and dump what they wanted to. Nobody wanted to bring stuff to the landfill. And things like this, a couch just sitting there left. People drop off their building materials and just find a place to dump it and away they go, dump away. Some more there. That's not even a day. That would be three, four times a day we take that truck full. That is mattresses, that's a couch. And it would be endless, endless, over and over and over. The truck would be full. Some more couches. This was just beside, in Hydro Park. Look at this mess. This is what some of our tourists were seeing as they come from the United States to fish on our Red River watershed to go after the notorious catfish and our pickerel, which people are coming from all around. And that's after the site was cleaned up. So look at those two different pictures. That's how it should look and what you just saw.
Is that public property?
That is hydro property, floodplain. So all what you saw in the first picture, the first spring, would have just took all that and washed it all the way down. Go ahead. Another shot of the same garbage area cleaned after. Fridges, another easy thing to just find a nook and cranny and dump. They, there's fridges everywhere. It is just absolutely amazing what you can find. Building materials. More building materials. The ice fishing debacle, the debauchery that ice fishing shelters at times, not every year, but at times can leave behind on the Red River. And again, this isn't painting a brush to say that all fishermen are the same, but there's that small minority of ice fishermen who do leave what you're gonna see coming up next in these next photos. It is just amazing what was left behind. It just continues, you can just keep going through. This is all left on the ice after they were told they have to have their ice fishing sharks up. Look at this mess. And they just bring stuff out there in December. They enjoy themselves, they bring their old couches, they bring their old ottomans, they bring old TVs. And when conservation, when we would come along and say, as you know, your sharks have to be off, they would just walk away from what they brought. Most of it is drinking. And this is all going into Lake Winnipeg if it's not picked up. A pail of human feces just left. So my program actually went out there and picked up a lot of this stuff. And if it wasn't for the program, a lot of that stuff would be just down the way. That was some bit of notoriety the program got. That was one of our first trucks we got. City of Selkirk actually donated one of their old public works trucks to the program. Million pounds. So each summer, we're picking up about forty-two thousand pounds. Times that by twenty-five years, a quarter century, and we're over a million pounds of all kinds of garbage. How the program works, this is where the nuts and bolts of the program comes in. It's on a shoestring budget. For twenty-five years, I've struggled and pushed and prodded and asked for money from different municipalities, as I say, and they came on board. But it's to sustain that money, is to try to find money for twenty-five years to keep this program afloat at times using my own vehicle to make it work. The city of Winnipeg was on board at the very beginning. They are no longer a partner. I will be approaching them again. But basically, the basic nuts and bolts of it is the RMs provide about three thousand dollars to the program. A fiscal summary is done every year. And these partners at the very beginning have taught there, have been with the program from day one. Even the Lockport Bridge, the federal Lockport Bridge in Lockport, we pick up their trash bins for them there as well and they are a partner. Gerdou Amersteel, the rolling mill in Selkirk is a partner. They're an industry. They know that they dump a little bit of effluent into the river. And as an industry, if they can be part of the fix, if they can be part of the solution, why not? So Gerdou Amersteel came on board and provides money. We do a couple cleanups with their employees and have a barbecue out there every year. I've worked with some of the local schools, Happy Thought School, the middle years, the Selkirk Junior High, where we bring a busload of kids out to the shoreline. Skinner's provides a free hot dog. And these kids learn about philanthropy and they learn about volunteerism. They learn about what's out there. They come home and they tell mom and dad what they saw. And that is getting it into the school so we can teach these kids, you don't just dump your slurpee cup on the shore and walk away or on the street. Someone's couch just decided to dump their couch on the shore of the Red River. Another truck full of debauchery. Another fridge. Another fridge. Lockport. Monofilament fishing line. We pick up a lot of monofilament fishing line. Ducks Unlimited was a partner at one point. They gave a little bit of a contribution. They realized that by us picking up monofilament fishing line, I can't tell you in my thirty-five careers, year career as a conservation officer, how many pelicans, ducks, geese that I've unentangled from this slow death that they get entangled in this fishing line. We pick up as much as we can about that. We're gonna try to put some educational signs out there eventually so we can educate folks out there that are fishing that please do not leave your monofilament fishing line on the shoreline because all it does is kills wildlife. Propane bottle. Another little article that was done to help out the program. These folks, the green anglers in Selkirk, they were wonderful. They had an environmental conscious fishing group that practiced green fishing techniques and really had a nice website and we linked together. And the Selkirk Journal at the time did an article on us and just telling people what we do and how you can take part. So that was really good. So that's about it, but basically that was dumped. But I like this picture because it actually shows what people think of our Red River when they dump what they dump. They treat it like a toilet. And I guess another reason why I'm here today is West St. Paul, of all the partner groups, twenty-five years ago when I came here and talked to the REED at the time, there was no appetite to join this wonderful initiative. And as the years went on, I came back and talked to the next REED and council still didn't, for some reason, have an appetite to take part in this wonderful program. So I thought I'd come back after a while and just see if the RM of West St. Paul would be interested in joining as a partner in this wonderful initiative that has done such amazing work in our area. And we could look at a few locations where barrels could be put, maybe at the end of Hodnot Road. Or you tell me where, if you want to be a partner, where you think a couple of forty-five gallon drums can go and we can come and clean up some stuff that we can find there. It would be nice to have West St. Paul on finally as a partner. I never did come back after so many years, so it's not your fault, it's my fault. I just got disillusioned twenty years ago and never came back. So I figured we'd come back now and approach this council and just see if there's an appetite to see what we can do. And I think as a councillor and RM of St. Clement's, I know when our rate payers see these pictures, they know my program. They know that I've been doing this for twenty-five years. They know where the program came from and the longevity that it's put in, that it's here to stay. And they still can't believe what's been picked up. So anything that anybody else can do to help out, appreciate them to that. So that is it, thank you.
Have a question, any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Yeah, thanks for the presentation, appreciate it. And thanks for your work as a conservation officer in the province. Just a couple of financial questions.
Yep.
And just how does the program sustain itself? Is it, what are the expenses year over year in terms of, or is this strictly a volunteer thing? Or how does it work?
The expenses are mostly just wages that the two employees get, fuel, supplies, bags, the accountant that does the bookwork. And then whatever money's left in the account at the end of the year, we just leave it and just add to it again at the beginning of the next year.
So is it managed by a volunteer organization? Okay, I see.
Me.
I get it, okay. And then have you ever approached the province in terms of getting a line item in the provincial budget? Because it seems like it's important work.
That would be a wonderful thing. So over twenty-five years, I've had numerous grants from the province of Manitoba. I've met with numerous ministers and premiers, dealt with three or four premiers on this. To get a line item in the budget for Manitoba government on this program would be, I've tried. Yes, twenty-five years of doing this, maybe if I did the pitch again to the current government and said, look what this, I always called it the little project that could. The little project that's done so much with such little money. Why wouldn't the province of Manitoba embrace this project? Why wouldn't the province of Manitoba say, kudos to you, to the program, good job? But there hasn't been. I need sustainable funding. And right now, the partner group that I have together is sustainable funding that we've finally been able to garner, those RMs that you saw. Which if it wasn't for them, and this project isn't about anything but them. If those partners weren't part of this project, the project would fail. So the accolades should be going to every partner that provides money to this because it's them who are responsible for making this happen. But I have approached the province, I should approach the province again. I will be going to the city of Winnipeg. It's just hard getting anybody's interest to see me. It's amazing, you tell them you're a councillor, you tell them, a fellow councillor, you tell them you're a conservation officer retired. It's challenging getting an ear.
So essentially, your budget is about, it's less than twenty thousand a year to run this program?
The budget is about forty-four thousand dollars.
What was it, forty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, and what was, I saw a slide that has some numbers on it.
Yeah, just back up to that slide.
What was that all about? It was like ten thousand or maybe, or maybe sixteen thousand or something like that?
There you go.
Oh, eighteen thousand?
Yeah. That's what's brought in. That was, those are numbers are from, is that three? Yeah. The budget has about a forty-three thousand dollar when we're in full operation with all the barrels out and the two employees working. These numbers are from when the budget or the employees were only down to one. And this year, we had not even any employees. I did most of the work. So it's been real challenging trying to, this last part of twenty-five years. We had an employee that worked for us for ten years as a student and I lost him. So it's been really challenging trying to find some more employees. But the budget does usually run about forty thousand, forty-three thousand dollars.
And then the dumping that's taking place, is that public property?
Public property, private property, crown land.
Okay.
Yeah, municipal land.
So some of it's private property?
Yep, yep. Just north of Selkirk, before you get to the end of Maine, there's a lot of private property on the right-hand side, right along the river. And if you go by there today, you'll see a whole bunch of no trespassing signs because a lot of this stuff was being dumped on their private property. So now they've shunned anybody who wants to fish. So again, the small portion of fishermen ruined it for themselves.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Shat?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President, for the presentation. I've seen it a few times. I'm very familiar with some of the areas, especially there at the Selkirk Bridge to nowhere there. But there's, that's where a lot of the private signs are now. They used to fish there and they're no longer letting people down there just because of the mess. So I'm familiar with this. I've spoken to you and some other former councillors or mayors about this too. So thanks for the presentation.
No, you're welcome.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, Robert, great presentation. It is, you know, it's pretty interesting to see what's all dumped. And, you know, I fish very often with my son out there, so I do see it. And, you know, I've tried to teach him. We bring out more than what we bring in every time because there's one spot where we always go and there's always garbage and we try to grab the fishing line as well and stuff like that. So, you know, we just, we fish just north of the locks there and there's always stuff, you know, just like you said, food or, you know, containers or whatever. And then, you know, sometimes we do go further up and yeah, that's where you really see the nastiness and all the trash that's being dumped.
Thank you for picking up. And there's more and more fishermen today being more conscious of it with those fishing forums that everybody's finding nowadays on the internet, the fishing forums. The fishermen are actually policing themselves. So it's actually been really, really good. And then for you to go up with your son and pick up stuff after you, it's only showing him the example, right? So that's great.
I will follow up.
Point.
So do you have a specific request of council?
A specific request would be just to do what the other RMs are doing, St. Clement's, Selkirk, the Lockport Bridge, St. Andrews, they're all putting, East St. Paul, they're all putting in three thousand dollars. And I'd be asking that West St. Paul become a partner and do the same. And I provide a fiscal summary at the end of every year, which would be much more detailed than this. And it really breaks down where all the funds go. And it would really give you a real good sense of how the project works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, doing your presentation.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, glad to have you. Boy, he's got good timing.
Yeah.
Chief.
Might as well come right to the.
Street to the hot seat.
Okay, you can start anytime.
I can start anytime?
Yes.
All right, good evening. So I'm here to speak to a report that either we'll be dealing with tonight or I guess on Thursday. The conclusion of our fire department hiring process has concluded, obviously. We started back in August where we did a full advertisement. We advertised the RM social sites, email blast, bulletin board, Selkirk Record, Facebook, Twitter, or X, or whatever it's called these days. And we got an overwhelming response. We got, at the close, we had thirty-six applicants of folks that met the minimum requirements. From that point forward, we had three, three of the applicants withdrew their applications once they found out we weren't a full-time service. We put thirty-three applicants through a physical practical test where we eliminated ten more. And following that, we held an information night where we had all the other, all the remaining candidates come in. We laid out the expectations, something that we normally used to do in our interview, last maybe for two or three minutes at the end of an interview. We now did it in about a two-hour session. So we gave them lots of information, we gave lots of time for everyone to ask questions. And following that, we had four more individuals withdraw their applications due to just time commitments and the realization of what was required to be part of the department. So that left us with nineteen individuals. From that nineteen, we held interviews of all, all the remaining nineteen. And following that, we selected what we feel are the ten best applicants and thus recommendation to have them appointed to the department.
Commissioner Campbell, got any questions?
Nope, I have no questions. It's, you know, just more question. So how, is it, it's not always that high of the number?
No, that's a record amount of applications that we've ever received in our history. In the past, maybe we've had a dozen to fifteen. That was, at the time, an overwhelming amount. This was by far the most we ever did. So I think it's, you know, a testament to increased population, testament to we seem to be able to reach lots of folks from different means. And we did a little survey on every applicant that we interviewed to see how we, how they became aware. And it was the full gamut. It's still simple as the poster on the bulletin board to email blast to social sites. So we're reaching folks in all different means. It worked well. It was a lot of work to process it, but it worked well.
That's good. I think you answered some of my other questions if you, how the information was getting out there. So thank you very much.
Yeah, so with this, with your recommendation, what does this take your complement to? And is that enough to meet the needs of, you know, your ability to respond to instances that are happening? Because I know you came here earlier this year talking about increase in instances. And so I just was curious about that.
So we currently have a complement of twenty-nine members. So that's down from our last hiring where we were at thirty-four. And this ten obviously puts us to thirty-nine. Because we had such a high return on our applications, I went with the maximum what we were recommending or suggested for hiring numbers when we talked back in the summer. With a little bit of contingency there, I think. We're gonna lose a few of our current members most likely in the next year or two. Just, that's inevitable. And a little bit of contingency of, you know, we've done the best due diligence with this group. We've been far more diligent with this group than we've ever done with a previous hiring. But there's a chance that maybe one or two may not make it all the way or may change their mind. And so, yes, I think it puts its, it's not gonna have an instant impact in our response capabilities. It's gonna take us six months to get them their fire training, approximately. But after that, it'll put us in a really good spot. And yes, I think it will meet the needs that we have today and next year. Moving past that, we'll see what the future brings.
So you said you did some testing of the individuals to determine, so what kind of testing, what was the type of testing that you did?
So we did some practical testing where we did a little bit of an endurance skill where they had to carry a hose up our mezzanine ladder to the top of our balcony and raise a hose, then grab the hose pack and run down back to where they started. And that was a timed event. We did a forcible entry drill where they had to move a weighted, a weight across a sledge, using, across a sled with, using a sledgehammer. So again, that was a timed event. We put them, we tested for claustrophobic by putting them in a blacked-out facepiece and put them in our training tower and made them go around the train, navigate the training tower with no visibility. We put them up our largest ladder. So that was about three stories that they had to climb up and climb back down. And then they had to do a weighted dummy drag. So one of our fire props that we have is a mannequin that they had to drag around a cone and back. And again, another timed event. So that was the practical, physical testing aspects. And then we conducted interviews with them.
So you did this all in one, these tests all in one, at one time?
The practical tests we did on a Sunday with a few exceptions of members that are individuals that weren't able to attend on that weekend. So it took us over the three separate days to get through all thirty-three at the time.
So how long did you, what was the length of time for each test then? Was it an hour, two hours?
For each individual test?
Oh, you did each individual, okay, yeah.
No, no, we had them here in big groups on the Sunday. But then schedules didn't permit everyone to be here on that Sunday.
So what was the timeline they were here for on Sunday?
We were here for approximately six hours.
Six hours.
To get through that. An individual test probably took fifteen minutes, twenty minutes roughly.
So now the six months of training, what does that involve?
The initial six months will just be their fire training, their level-one firefighting.
So none of these have level-one fire?
With the exception of one. One is fully trained, level-two firefighter and he's currently a paramedic. So he will, so there'll be nine of them that will have to go through the training. We'll do an orientation with this one individual and he'll be probably response-ready by the new year.
So do these also have to provide you with, these individuals, do they have to provide a note from the doctor? The doctor was.
Yeah, that was all part of their initial application.
Oh, that was, okay.
And that was already completed along with a criminal record, driver's abstract. And then within this first six months, individuals also have to upgrade their driver's license to class four and air brakes if they don't already have it. We'll get them some CPR first aid training and then along with, they'll be doing their fire training.
So that upgrading of license, is that the cost or is that?
That's our, we front that cost.
You front that cost, okay.
From this point forward, now the department will look after the cost to get these individuals what they need.
Only because they're on staff here.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your time, for your explanation. Appreciate it.
No problem.
It's good to hear that, you had a good response.
It was, it was great.
Next on the list is... There it is, right there, okay. Seven Oaks Raiders is next. Who is doing the speaking for Seven Oaks Raiders? Yes, by all means, sir. Or you can just, you're gonna have us stop?
I'm gonna, yeah, I think we're gonna, yeah, if we could.
Sure.
We'll be quick.
Thank you for having myself and some of our young players from our Raiders Youth Thirteen A Two Hockey Club. We appreciate your time tonight. My name is Darren Palin, and I have lived on Northumberland Road in West St. Paul for almost twenty years. My wife, Krista, and I are currently raising two children in this area, and we feel very fortunate to be a part of this excellent community. Both my children have been students at West St. Paul School, and our experience there has been fantastic as well. Before I begin, I would like to have the boys introduce themselves from our Youth Thirteen A Two Hockey Club.
My name is Giacca Palin, and I live on Northumberland Road.
And I was Jonah Carrick, I live on Meehaha.
My name's Declan Campbell, I live on Oakley Street.
My name is Jager.
Sorry, and where do you live?
Uh, Meehaha.
Meehaha.
My name is Dallas Kushia, and I live on Bona.
My name's Ramada Silva, and I live on Moon Street.
My name is Matthew Gillespie, and I live on Red Ranch Drive.
Thanks, guys. So we are here tonight to follow up on a letter recently sent to council, seeking sponsorship of our Youth Thirteen Raiders team for the 2024-2025 season. We are fortunate to actually have six West St. Paul resident players on this team, which represents about half of the entire squad. It's pretty impressive. We have a great parent group, and our coaches and management have been doing some exceptional work with the kids thus far this season. To summarize our objectives, we feel it is important to keep kids very active, and help them to achieve community spirit and a sense of teamwork. It also helps keep our kids away from the constant use of electronic devices, which I'm sure everyone here tonight can understand. It is no secret that hockey is an expensive sport, and indoor practice ice is one of the biggest expenses. In fact, I've recently heard of indoor ice times selling for as much as five hundred dollars per hour. Our team has already taken part in one tournament this year, and has plans to attend a couple more. Today, we asked council to kindly consider a sponsorship of one thousand dollars to be used for team expenses for the 2024-25 hockey season. In conclusion, with sports come lifelong friendships, and those friendships often lead to our children and their friends remaining in the community after graduation, and raising their own families right here in West St. Paul. Thank you for having us all, have a great night.
Okay, just hold on a minute. Do you have any questions?
No, no questions for myself.
Are you the play-by-play announcer?
I used to be, I still do a bit of it, but not, not for hockey, motorsports stuff.
Excellent. Fantastic, glad to hear that.
Any other questions?
I would just thank you very much for bringing the youth and introducing yourselves to all of us, appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
All good?
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Monster John?
Yeah.
Mike, the Monster John. I was trying to think of the voice.
Okay. Oh, that's pretty good.
Okay, that takes us down to four point four point one, financial statements for the period ending September thirtieth.
All right, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So we have our quarter three financials, September thirtieth. As you'll see, our current surplus is four point five million. This is due to all of our supplemental taxes and council taxes being added to the general ledger for September. We had to get the bills out by September thirteenth, so the majority of these entries were done first week of September.
So what, what was the dollar amount first?
So as of right now, sorry, I'm just gonna pull up my sheet here. We had a supplemental addition to the roll of one point two million. We currently have fifteen thousand in council taxes. That is going to change with our border revision that wrapped up last week. We have a number of adjustments to make to a number of rolls. I don't know the total yet, as I haven't reviewed the owner-assessor agreements that have been put in place. Border revision, the only change was for 2025, so that won't affect twenty-four financials. Are there any questions on the balance sheet?
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll jump into our general operating fund. This is our overall revenues and expenses for the general side of our municipality. As you'll see here, there's the one point two four four for added taxes. It's three, four down. Our tax redemption penalties, we're coming close to what we have budgeted. We budgeted one hundred and eighty thousand, we're currently sitting end of September at one seventy-two. So I anticipate that to come in a little higher than, than budget. What that means is people are not paying their taxes on time. A number of them are letting it go to the two-year mark, and then we send notices for tax sale. Also, that being said, there's also quite a few larger properties that met the threshold for tax sale. They have entered into tax sale agreements. That being said, our tax sale for the year has been completed in September, or sorry, in October. We had one property that went forward, which the RM retained, as you'll see from my monthly report. Carrying on, on here, we'll have our user fees, our unconditional government transfers, conditional government transfers, those are generally grants, or operating grants, so transfers that come in. Carrying on, and then we have just a little bit of miscellaneous revenue, or I shouldn't say a little bit, we have miscellaneous revenue on the bottom there. So that takes care of our revenues for September. Questions?
Yeah, so your miscellaneous revenue, that came from where? The seven hundred and eighty thousand?
Um, I think you've asked me that a few times already, yeah.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, let me see if I can pull it up from what I have here.
Is that from the grant from earlier, or?
Uh, so yeah, so we have, no, not a grant, but we sold some property, that is the property on Grassmere. The sale went through earlier this year. We also have a little bit of revenue for copies and tax statements, so anytime someone comes into the office and requests a physical copy, we charge them the cost of our printing for that copy. That's stated in our fees and charges by law. Also included in there would be the Canada Day donations and revenues.
Where was that?
In the miscellaneous revenue. So all, all these items are included in that miscellaneous revenue.
So you said Canada Day?
Yeah, Canada Day donations and revenue. We have some miscellaneous revenues, so that would be any kind of NSF fees. If we have any kind of interest income for, say, a GST return, it's a miscellaneous revenue. And then we have our revenue from copies and tax statements, as well as the real estate proceeds on that sale of the lot on Grassmere. Any other questions on the revenue side?
Any other questions?
Nope. Okay, so carrying on, we go into the expenses, that's on, starts on page three. So the top part there, the legislation, those are your council expenses, so that's what we have realized to date, as of September thirtieth. Carrying further down, we have the administration side, then we have protective services, which is the fire department, transportation services, which is public works, environmental health services, that is our garbage and recycling, public health and welfare, that is our handyman services, environmental development, that is our planning services, economic development, that is the, oh my gosh, economic fee that we have to pay each year. It's twelve, twelve thousand dollars. That's for the environment and economic, I can't remember off the top of my head what they're called. I can get back to you on that one, it slipped my mind at the moment. Following that, we have recreation and culture, so this is anything that occurs at our access center. And then we have our transfers, our fiscal services. So here we'll have, those are, I'm gonna give you the exact details as to what makes up that seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Just seven hundred and twenty-five, that's the?
Yeah, the seven hundred fiscal services there, the seven twenty-five, five ninety-six, I'll give you the details for that one. So that would include our debenture debt charges, as well as the interest on the long-term debt.
So when you say debenture charge, that's principal and interest?
The debenture is the principal, and then the interest is another line item. But combined, it's seven twenty-five for 2024.
Oh, that's combined, okay.
Yep. And then we have contribution to capital, so this is any projects that we have going on. So currently, we have the LIDs, so any expenses that we've been incurring are charged to that account. And then they're divided up over, if the project goes through, divided amongst the residents.
So when you say contribution to, that's the?
Yeah, the contribution to capital, those are expenses for projects that are to be collected outside the RM, so, and by RM, I mean us here, it's usually project costs that are divided up amongst local improvement areas. Further down, we have our transfers in, so these would be transfers for all of our capital items that council has approved at the beginning of the year. And then that will bring us to the bottom section, so we have our transfers too. These are all the revenues that we've received to date, that have been transferred over to the reserves. So we have, we have received a little bit of capital development reserve, green space reserve levies, there's the fire equipment, so that's for any MPIC call that the fire department attends. All those revenues are automatically transferred into our fire equipment replacement reserve. We have a couple of reserves there that are budgeted, so we have the general reserve, the equipment replacement, as well as the election and Canada Day reserves, so those are directly on your page eight of your financial budget for 2024. And then the sewer and water are also collected via development, so subdivisions. So just below that, you will see that our operating surplus is the four point five, which matches your balance sheet. Questions on the expense side?
Peter, Georgia. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Following that, we jump into our balance sheet reserves. So this is the state of our reserves as of September thirtieth. The sixteen million is what we currently have sitting in the bank. Further down, the four point seven is what is owed to the reserves, and the bottom part is our overall total in that specific reserve. Now, these will change, and they have changed quite drastically since the September thirtieth, because a lot of our projects wrap up in the fall. So you will see on your next few statements that these amounts have been adjusted.
So are the adjustments going down, or?
Uh, it depends. The capital reserves, so the capital development, green space, those ones have increased, as well as the sewer and water, have increased slightly due to the revenues that we've received. Gas tax gone down, that's due to the roadworks that have been completed to date, as well as a couple of the other ones have decreased since the beginning of the year.
Go ahead.
I gotta, what is this one, the access center, non-residential, what, what does that money get, reserve money get used for?
That can be used for anything related to the access center itself, and it can also be used for a phase two, if that is ever to be.
Oh, phase two?
A phase two of access, yeah. So those are any of the fees that we collect over and above our resident rates. So as you see, we went through that earlier this year, set the fees and charges. The non-residents who don't live here pay a little bit more of a premium than our current, our residents, right? Any other?
Council, Michelle, you have a question?
Two questions here. On the Canada Day reserve, that's already with this year removed from the, or is there still stuff to be paid?
Uh, so that is the reserve as of beginning of the year. Their Canada Day report will be coming to the next meeting in November. I just ran out of time to prepare all the information that council had requested at the last COW. There was four years' worth of financials that were requested, as well as analyzing all the information that is sitting in the current expense and revenue account. By the looks of it, I'll just take a quick peek here. There might be a slight transfer to the reserve for our 2024 Canada Day.
The next question, just since the, I guess, ending of the REIT committee, is that where this non-resident and the resident amounts came from? Was from the REIT committee, or?
No, the REIT committee stuff, I'm still working on reconciling.
Okay.
Uh, once that is done, then we will have a reserve for all the sports funds.
Because there was also a phase two fund in there, so?
Yeah, so that's all part of that non-resident. I believe the phase two was to be paid by the non-resident fees. The way the bylaw is written, it can be used for repairs and maintenance of access, it was Senova, but now Access Center, as well as towards the phase two plans, if and when they proceed.
Yeah, I was just more curious if that was all that came out of the?
No, nothing in here has anything to do with sports.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
So completing that, then we jump into our utility side of things. So the first is the Rivers Edge utility. Here's our balance sheet for the month ending September. Not a whole lot of changes, you'll have some, you'll have changes in the accounts receivables, because we did do the billing end of September, due October thirty-first. Nothing changed, there might be slight, slight changes within the due-to, due-froms, as expenses are incurred and paid. There's no changes in the assets, as mentioned previously, the assets always update at the end of the year, once, because we work on a cash basis, everything's expensed, and then it's allocated under PSAB to the asset accounts at the end of the year. So you'll see here, our current surplus for Rivers Edge is almost ten thousand, so it's nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. On the next page, you'll have our statement of operations, so your detailed breakdown of your revenues and expenses. Further down, you'll see that that surplus matches what's on your balance sheet. And following that is our reserve statement for Rivers Edge. Any questions on the Rivers Edge?
Any questions? Very none, go ahead.
Okay. Following that is our sewer utility operating balance sheet. So again, balance sheet, further down, you'll see, so you'll have a change in the accounts receivable, the due-to, due-froms, those will change as expenses are incurred and revenues are received, no change in the assets, as, like I said, those are done at the year end. You'll have a slight change in your payables, and then your current surplus is seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. And then your current surplus is seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. Now, the utilities will run at a surplus and they have to in order to offset. The depreciation of the assets as per the P U B. So.
Go ahead.
The, so that surplus will be transferred to the reserve, but under PSAB, it's transferred back and it offsets the. Um, the amortization on those assets.
Okay.
So the next statement is the statement of operations. So your revenues and expenses, um, you'll see that the revenues have changed. Because we did do the billing, as I said, September thirtieth. Uh, and then you have your expenses, your monthly changes, wages, uh, any other type of expenses that occur throughout the month. Uh, to maintain this sewer utility. So that one is, stands over two pages. On the second page is your net surplus of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, which matches your balance sheet. And then following that statement is your reserves for the sewer utility. That's what they were at as of January first. All reserve transfers are done at year end, uh, once the books have been finalized. Questions on the sewer side?
None, Counsel Beshetti, no, none. Not, none, go ahead, please, thank you.
Okay, following that is our water operating fund balance sheet. So again, you'll see the accounts receivables have increased. Uh, the due-to-do from, that'll change, like I said, as expenses and revenues incur. Uh, and then further down, you'll see that your current surplus is a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Following that is your statement of operations. So you have your revenues and expenditures. Again, like I said previously, we did complete the billing as of September thirtieth, so your revenues have increased. Uh, and then your normal day-to-day expenses, wages, uh. Basic maintenance, operation, expenses. And you'll see down on the bottom there, the hundred and fifty-one matches your surplus that is on your balance sheet. Following that is your water reserve statement. And that's where we are sitting currently. Questions on the water?
None, okay, none, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so following that. And I don't have a copy of it. Oh, I do. I put in the wrong spot. Okay, so we have our capital summary for the year. Uh, as of September thirtieth. You'll see that. Uh, we have included a column here for comments as of November. Sixth, and the complete percentage of completion is also as of November sixth. Uh, the dollars on this statement is of, as of September thirtieth, so that it matches your financial statements that have been presented. Um. There are a few projects that have completed since we met last. Uh, I don't know if you took a chance to read through the comments. Are there any questions? Regarding the capital project statement?
Counsel Campbell?
No, I have nothing.
Counsel Beshetti?
No, it's, that's.
I'll just add a, I'll just add a comment. Um, thank you very much. Uh, this chart is, uh, is much improved from, from last month. I appreciate the addition of the, uh, final column. It's something that, uh. Adds additional transparency and accountability to, uh, the, uh. Uh, the capital. The capital, uh, projects, um, chart. And so I really appreciate that. It's something that I was asking for and. It's a good start and, uh, want to congratulate you for doing that.
Thank you. And thank you to our CEO as well, who has definitely helped.
Congratulations to the CEO.
And all other department managers.
I have a, for the, the tandem come truck, that's scheduled to be here by the end of the year, right? Do you know if that's still on schedule or is that?
Yeah, it is.
Or it is, okay.
Yeah, we, I mean, the truck isn't delivered. It's just a matter of, um. Uh, completing the, the, uh, the sanding blocks and another finishing.
So when you say that truck has been deli- has been delivered here to West Saint Paul or to?
No, we'll do, to the shop.
To the shop, present, okay.
Just had a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, another one, just looking at the, going down on the chart. Um, so this is capital. There are other projects that, I'm not sure if they, they may not be on here. That we, that we had talked about during the budget process. And is that, is that, uh?
They are, the larger ones like, uh, the GPS, at the, on the final page, the GPS. On all RM vehicles and equipment, that is one of the capital project. That's, that's a problem.
Okay.
And then there's a, 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 a program application that we will, uh, we will work towards as well.
Are all of the operating projects in here or some still need to be added?
Uh, no, we have not added all the operating projects, um. That were requested. I do remember that you were talking about the, the grounds in front.
Yeah.
Of the municipal building here. Uh, we can look at adding that in for the next report. Uh, just to give you an idea of what was, what took place this year and what the future plans are going forward for it, if that works.
Yes, that'd be appreciated, thank you.
So would you separate that out for capital, um?
Yeah, so if you see the bottom, um, I guess it would be page three. Uh, I know it's quite small up on the screen there, but we have down on the bottom. Okay, no, page four. So we, here we have the GPS, which is operating. So we'll just put in there the funding sources to where it was. Paid out of.
Oh, oh, right there, yes.
Yeah, and then we'll add a little bit extra information as to what was spent and, uh, where the project's at and what was done. Um. Uh, to complete for twenty twenty-four. And that's something I think that, uh, we'll have to discuss further in budget. To see where we want to go from here.
Okay.
Just a question on PR number sixteen, the surveillance cameras. I see. I like what I'm reading with regards to obtaining high-resolution cameras. I think that's good. Um. Uh, can someone speak to the challenges regarding that? Is it, uh, is that something that's super specialized? Is it, is it unattainable? Is it, uh?
We're still, we're, we're still falling off on that maybe for all purposes. We're trying, we're, uh, trying to spec, uh, a high-resolution, uh, system that provides for. For identification of license plates and, and details of, uh, any conditions that we're trying to capture. Um. We're, we're going to have to see, um, what kind of resolution we can get within existing document and have a discussion with council to probably want to proceed. There's also other concerns, not just because of the resolution of cameras themselves, but. But, um, the amount of bandwidth that's required to transmit that level of resolution, as well as the amount of, um. Cloud storage required to sort of, uh, that resolution. So, I think, I think we'll need to have a, uh, fullsome conversation with council in terms of. Um, the trade-offs between cost and, um. And, uh, resolution, um, to an extent, council, um, would like, uh, or help our council with that.
Okay, thanks for that answer. Just, just then, just a follow-up question then. If, if. And I realize we're going to have a discussion on it, but if, uh. If council elected not to go with a high resolution, would that still provide? The RM with the ability to, um. How do you call it? Prosecute, uh, potential theft that occurs?
Um, if, if you're able to definitively identify, um. The, the perpetrator with, with the cam off, I mean, if, if that would get to the courts, right? The, the better resolution you have, the more exacting, um, identification you have, the stronger your case is. Right, it, it would be an advocate of all the evidence available to the courts, right?
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation, uh.
You're welcome. You're welcome, anytime. Yeah, we, we can add the projects, other projects to this report, definitely. Um, we did a lot of work on this. This report for council this time to, uh, be more transparent and add additional information for your, your benefit.
I, I did appreciate that it's, uh, basically six days old in terms of information. So, I mean, it's a lagging report, but it's not like thirty days lagging. So I appreciate that effort.
Okay, thank you for your time. So now it takes us down to, uh, four point, four point two miscellaneous correspondence for the month of October, who has received this information. If anyone has any questions, Counsel Campbell, no questions?
No.
Counsel Beshetti? Counsel Pakkan?
No.
Okay, now we're down to four point, four point three, scheduled of council meetings. Uh, he recommended, what comes up here, I see. Oh, it's like. Does ev- has everyone looked at it or any other?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Nope, that's not that one. Great. Does anyone have any notes or comments on it or? So I guess. So when is, uh? FCM this year? Isn't it around May sixth? I don't see it.
It's end of May, beginning of.
Oh, end of June, end of May, right, beginning of June.
Yeah.
Did you ever, we're going to ask our, our, MLO.
Thank you, yes. So we, we review ca- council's schedule and anticipated events right from January, when we have Red River Basin Commission. All the way through December. So all the AMM conventions in spring and fall, the FCM. Uh, any, any of those events are, are considered in this, and if there's a conflict, then we recommend the cancellation of that meeting.
Oh, so.
FCM is May twenty-ninth to June first.
Yeah, okay. Wasn't sure. Okay. So we got Christmas off. Number eleven. Any other questions?
Uh, just a comment. Is there, um. Any for seeing, just looking at when we have our busy months, um. We have the November eleventh, when canceled, is that something you think is in? It's not a planning one, but is that something you think we need moving or we would just add something in as needed?
I think, I think probably what we would do is, if it looked like we needed one, we might add one in at that point.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, like, last month and this month, you, we've had five or six public hearings for the last two planning ones, so just to.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Generally scheduling, uh, on days other than Tuesdays or Thursdays sometimes becomes challenging. So I think, I think, uh, we'd probably, um. Proceed under the presumption that, that we would not have the committee of the whole on the eleventh. But if required, we, we would make special arrangements.
You brought up a good point. So I'm wondering then, like, it's like what you're saying. Can we just make canceled and have behind our, uh, if needed or as needed or rescheduled or? Just an indication that, you know, there's.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could say cancel and then, and then have rockets, reschedule if required.
Yes, and then it makes everybody aware that there may be one or there may not be one and.
Yeah, we could add that.
Yeah. Okay.
So just on that thinking then, um.
Yeah, by all means, go ahead.
Uh, just with regards to the schedule, I think it's, uh, it's good that we're publishing it. Now, I, maybe this is a question for, uh, either the CEO or the AMLO. But has, i- is there any awareness of councils allocating a day or a couple of days on a regular basis? Um, for, um, in the event that meetings are required, special meetings. Uh, or educational briefings, so that it's, that these, that these days that are identified are planned. So that council members can plan for them if they're earmarked. So what I'm getting at is that. You know, if council requires certain, a certain needs to meet for anything, um, that we have these days that are set. And, uh, we, council could potentially use those days as educational briefing days or council roundtable days or whatever the case may be. Is that, uh, is that something that RMs have done or can coun- could council do that?
Well, I, I, I think, I think as a, as a rule of thumb. You know, we could, we could keep our, our Tuesdays and Thursdays open, right? And if, if, um, in, in particular, like, maybe the, um. Um, the Tuesday that corresponds with the second council meeting. So you, you've got the, the, the second, the second Thursday, the second Thursday.
Okay.
Right, maybe, as a rule of thumb, people might want to keep that date available more often than not. I don't know, I don't know if we'd want to schedule it into people's calendars at this point and, and sort of, um. I, I, I guess, if council's still inclined, we could send out a, a whole, a whole notice in everybody's calendar for that. But I think, I think as a rule of thumb, we try to schedule educational briefings and special events and needed events on, um, on Tuesdays. Or if it's on, uh, sort of a, a middle week, we schedule on a Tuesday or Thursday.
I, I like your thinking, but, and I, and I, I agree that we should probably not s- schedule it, but maybe, uh, put it as a placeholder. Because, uh, at least it's on people's minds, uh, when they're planning.
Just send out like a, uh, electronic tentative placeholder.
Yeah. That's sort of what I'm thinking. That's for council to consider, but it allows council, um. Provides council, I think, with the, the ability to, uh, to pivot quickly if, if, if required for special meetings or whatever the case may be.
Right.
Counsel J?
I, I'm just going to say I agree with Counsel Pakkan that, you know, tentatively putting it in there, but to permanently schedule something in there. We'd have to relook at our organizational, we'd have to open organizational bylaw to do that, so.
You think maybe we could just put a footnote on the bottom?
Well, I, I mean, those aren't, those aren't, wouldn't be the formal council meetings.
Yeah, no.
Everything's like educational briefings, um, any type of other, uh, presentation or event or something, you know, that.
Roundtables.
You know.
Right.
A he- a public hearing that, that we might need to hold at some point as, as required. And we would, basically all we're talking about doing is holding the spot in people's calendars, so, so it's readily available if we need to schedule something as it comes out. But it's, it's not a formal council meeting that, that we're approving at this time.
Yeah.
So it, really just a placeholder in people's calendar.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? None? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're down to four point, four point four, which is, uh, public municipal office, public works and access center holiday schedule. Any questions? Counsel Campbell, none?
No.
Shetty?
I'm good.
I got a quick, just. So, access. Oh, they're closed inside, okay. Nope, I guess. I was, thought I'd ask something, no, I have no questions.
Actually, I have a question now.
Go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the CEO addressed this last year, but I just wanted to get a refresher. So these are the, for public works department, the closure days, in the event of any kind of, uh, response required for a snow event. Can you speak to that with regards to these closures?
Yeah, public works is on call for a second, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other ones? So now we're down to. Curbside collection holiday, it's, it's received for information, four point, four point five. And now we had a request for service, four point. Five point one. Uh, October to, uh, October first, October thirty-first. Does anyone have any questions? Counsel Pakkan?
I'm good.
None yet? There it is. Counsel Beshetti?
No.
Any questions, Tom?
What number you on?
The October first, October thirty first, request for service, four point, five point one.
I'm good.
Good. Okay, takes us down to four point, five point two, request for service, January first to October thirty first. Any questions, anybody?
No, for me, thanks.
Okay, that takes us now down to, five point, five point one, Red River Planning, twenty twenty three Audit Financial Statements. Anyone have any questions? Council Campbell, no. Shetty, Council Machete, no. Council Pachacan, none, okay. Now we got the five point two, West St. Paul's Citizens on Patrol Program. They've done a November update. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it. Does any questions to it?
I guess just more of a comment. I don't know if the rest of council has looked through this, but I was asked by the, the person in charge, is this satisfactory to what council would wanna see on a regular basis?
Yeah, I think, I think what I'm, I've had a chance to look at it, I think it was good. And it provides good information, so I'm gonna thank Council Machete for asking and thank the COPP group for agreeing what they're doing.
Yeah, they have a fair amount of hours, eh? Nine thousand hours so far this year, year to date, or kilometers, I should say. Nine thousand kilometers, three hundred, eight hundred thirty-four hours.
It's up to Murray, he wants to get more and more, get it, get him out there.
So what is, like, when he has volunteer kilometers, what does that mean? Do you know? Right here, year to date metrics, he's caught way on the end. I would've thought that it would've been. Does he explain what it is?
Just trying.
It's right there.
Yeah, no, I know that. I'm just trying to remember in our discussions, which was broken down.
Yeah. Guess we can find out later on.
Yeah, I can. It, it just amalgamates some cer- certain numbers, but I'll get clarity on that. I don't wanna.
Yeah, no. Okay, so that takes us down to, let's see, that's six. Nothing in there. Seven question period. Anyone have any questions? I'll ask council first. None? Okay. Any questions, by all means?
Peter, or Mr. Mayor, you might wanna ask about the December newsletter, six point one.
Say again, please?
December newsletter.
Oh, the newsletter before question period is six.
Oh, yeah, okay, miss, yeah. So I don't know if anyone wants to put anything in the December's newsletter. I think that's, are we gonna put in about the LID?
If we have news, we would include any decision from municipal board. We do have some articles planned from the COP group. We have our regular stuff. We'll put in our twenty twenty five garbage recycling and yard waste calendar. We will focus on Remembrance Day, the West St. Paul Park. We had a firefighter attend, firefighter memorial in Ottawa, so we'll provide some information about that. So lots of good information coming out in December.
Okay, Council Shetty?
If you could possibly make the COPP aware that this is the December one and they wanna have AGM in January, just so that they could, you know, put it in there for the date, just that there won't be another one coming up before that, so.
So when's the deadline for this December one, do you know?
We try to have the December newsletter printed early in December, so if possible, November thirtieth would be ideal for us.
I guess I'll think of it later. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Eleanor Link, ten forty-five, Toshack Road. My question, questions are around items three, delegations, and items four point, four point two, correspondence. I'm, I'm asking how are written requests for donations, chosen for placement on the agenda under delegations? And I'm asking this because I do see other requests for funding that appear in correspondence on, on stationary that is marked from the source of who's asking for the funds. There's two requests on there. What happens to those requests, if anything? So I'm asking, what's the process for pulling out certain written requests for inclusion under the delegation portion of the meeting? And I'm also, I, I, I believe there is a budget for donations to organizations. And I'm, I'm wondering what was the total budget? And how much has been donated already and how much remains in the budget for more donations? Thank you.
So just gotta clarify, so you're asking on delegations? I'm not quite following your question on delegations when they ask for donations. What, what's the, you asked a question about it. Can you just maybe expand a bit more on it again?
Well, I want to know the process. How are requests that are written requests that are received for funding, identified for inclusion on the agenda?
Okay.
And others aren't? What, what, what's the criteria, I guess, is what I'm asking? And is there, is there a process? Is there a policy? If so, what is it?
I think the CEO might be able to answer that question.
Yeah, if, if, if an organization specifically asks to appear as a delegation, we grant them a delegation.
And none of the letters that I saw requested a delegation.
No, it was a verbal request.
A verbal, they have to, and is that in a policy that people who are, say, interested in getting a contribution to some organization, is that in a policy that people can be given or see, have access?
There isn't, there isn't a policy in our regard, but if people request to appear as a delegation, we generally try to grant it.
Okay.
Any, any sort of delegation.
Pardon me?
That's what he's saying. If someone asks to appear as a delegation, doesn't matter if it's coming to wish us, you know, happy holidays or whatever, if someone's asking to appear as a delegation, you know, within reason, then they generally grant that, that.
Is, but you haven't got a policy that will clarify what's within reason?
So I guess when you say within reason for a donation or for?
For delegation.
For a delegation.
I would say a delegation for funding. Or, would you, if you have a policy, it would cover situation or scenario A, B, and C, right? But it sounds as if there really is no policy to inform people who are looking to approach the council.
Well, I think, you know, generally the way it's gone is that, well, I'll give you an example with this from the, the hockey rink case. You know, I came across them and then they approached, they said, hey, look at, like, you think that the RM would wanna do a donation? And I said, well, maybe you should just come as a delegation and ask for it, so. It, it seems to be open. I mean, if someone wants to come for a delegation, they need to ask it. And then I think I passed it off to our MLLO and said, hey, look, I think these people are gonna be coming for a delegation, cause that's who they contact, is our MLLO, and then MLLO, and they, she gives them the parameters. And she sort of vets them and she sort of sees where they are and gives them some instructions and.
So it's up to the MLLO to vet?
Yes, because that's where, am I, am I right on that, on my wrong one? They usually speak to the MLLO. I, that's who I send them to.
Generally speaking, if, if somebody requests to appear as a delegation, we, we provide them the opportunity to appear as a delegation.
Yeah.
And that, that's regardless of, of the topic or the subject matter.
Yes.
And, 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 and that's, that's the practice.
Okay. And then after council adheres, the delegation will wind up discussing it at some point and then we'll tell them, give them an answer.
In this case, that will be discussed at the planning meeting next Thursday, I would assume.
Yes.
Yeah. So is there a budget? Does, can there be comments about, is there a budget line for donations? And how much has been already spent and?
There is a budget line for donations and there is a list of budgets that we've, donations that we've already approved that I recall seeing. Doesn't mean that we can't take some more out of operating if that's what we choose. We will, we'll ask the, our director of finance what the parameters are, if that's possible, so. This one is, I think, we also have our own council funds that we can probably contribute to.
Discretionary funds?
Yes, which is what we would decide if that's what we wanna do. I, that's how I see it. So like, we're not gonna say yes to everybody and we're not gonna say no to everybody. Some of them have good, have good presentations and some of them have good reasons for it and for what they want. And if we feel that it's a worthwhile cause, then why not contribute to it? I think our finance director has something about the donation budget.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for twenty twenty four, council approved twenty nine thousand two hundred dollars towards donations that are requested annually. So that includes our COP donation as well as our Curling Club scholarships. So those certain things that are pre-approved during budget. Anything that is over and above that amount that has been approved comes out of the community initiatives that council has discretionary use over. So they can use it towards any type of community program. For example, the pumpkin contest, our counselor Pachacan chose to use that, his funds, his community initiatives funds to offset those costs. Any donations or grant requests that come forward to council throughout the year, those will come out of those community initiative funds as well, spread either evenly or if one counselor chooses to fund the entire donation request.
Thank you, that's good. I was not aware of the council having, each having a, an amount that they are using for personal initiatives. That's, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Norm Albert, three twelve, Evelyn. Not a question as much as a comment, and it's regarding the zoning bylaw amendment for in camera.
Maybe just ask for the question form, please, cause this is question period.
Okay. Has, and then you're gonna say it's in camera. Has the council, certainly in my neighborhood, as Council BuSeti is well aware, there's a significant increase in the presence of the coyotes. And so has council in their deliberations on the review of the zoning bylaw paid attention to the criteria regarding zoning and residential areas in the presence of chicken coops? I love a chicken coop, but not when it's bringing coyotes through my yard at three o'clock in the afternoon. And that is what's happening. And it's, so there's, there's a significant safety issue that is evolving now as these two are more timed together with the increased population, chicken coops and increased coyote population. And unfortunately, it coincides that the coyotes are often along the river and the density of the population is along the river, so.
So are you seeing an increase in chicken groups?
Well, just one in recent months has completely changed how we see the coyotes in our yard this year, totally changed it. It's any time of day, night, through the yard, the coyote will just walk up a driveway like a dog would, minus a leash. So I think there's a significant safety issue. And there, it's a challenge, you know, being a rural municipality, but still I think that perhaps council can look at whether particular zones should or should not. If, any place where there's, there has actually been a coop on our street for over twenty years, it was never known to be a problem. So something about location, the structure, the requirements of if a coop is allowed, how it's to be constructed and just putting rules around that. So has that, has that been any discussion to date within the bylaw discussions?
I think this is something we should be discussing offline, just cause we're getting onto more, right onto specific streets and.
But I think it's a, like, it's a discussion now for the zoning thing that I see. I don't have any problem with chicken coops.
I'm not gonna.
And I love to get the, the fresh eggs, but the safety thing really concerns me. I never even thought about it before. Like I said, we, there was a coop in our area for twenty years, but now in recent weeks, it's completely changed the pattern. So it begs the question of safety in that regard.
Okay. As far as know, we haven't talked about it, so I guess it's something that we probably should. Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that's good. So now we'll go down to in camera number eight. Okay, so we're gonna be adjourning the meeting now. Just make note that Peter Campbell finished off the meeting by phone. And it is now nine thirty-two PM. Thank you.